Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting, the Somersville City Council on this fourteenth day of August 2023. I'd like to welcome our guests tonight and move right into the agenda. First item on the agenda being the consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held July 24th of 2023.
Move to approve and waive the reading?
Second. Okay, council, the motion was to move to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to these minutes as they were presented in your package?
None.
Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Next item would be consideration of the council minutes of the special meeting we held on July 27th of 2023.
Move to approve and waive the reading?
Second. Okay, we got a first and a second. That motion also was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment.
We have one that they want to speak when you talk about the animal and foul orders.
Okay. Sir, what I'd like you to do is go ahead and come to the podium and address yourself and you can say anything you want towards that ordinance. There will be two readings. You can, you know, let us know where you stand. I'll even be gracious tonight. Normally I give three minutes, I'll give you five minutes, and then we'll go into the ordinance and it'll be an agenda item. And then if you don't like what you hear or see, you're welcome to come back next meeting before the final reading. Okay? So if you'd like to take the vote and just let us know where you're at and your address, please.
Okay, I'm Dave Mitchell.
[laughing]
Anyway, but I'm Dave Mitchell. I live in Fordham, King Ashley. I have nine laying heads. First, I also want to say for Joey and Gary here, they're two of the most professional people that when they come out to the house, I really have a lot of respect for them. Gary here's really gave me a lot of help and information, good guidance.
Good.
Good folks. But anyway, I have nine laying heads, no roosters. When Joey came up, he had heard someone filed a complaint, called him a complaint, that they heard my roosters crowing. Well, I had to go back out there and check that out. This invisible one, I haven't seen it yet. But anyway, to get down to it, Joey was extremely informative that cannot have chickens within the city limits. But when I went back and Gary came out once again, it was very, very helpful as far as getting a, I talked to him about the permit and stuff, the application, but he could also inform me that there were deed restrictions, or there could be. And so what we did is I started going through the process and actually I had to print my own little chicken permit request. And I took the ordinance with me, Rev. 5.4, and I went around to that 500-foot distance. To get that 500 feet, I had, when I lined, I used the county's measuring thing to get that cap. Now, the full circle I can't get unless y'all want me to stand down in that plaza all day and get people coming in and out, because I dropped right off into it. But I do get the half moment there. I took that with me so they could see it. And it also specifies on both copies that I have nine laying heads, no roosters. There's all their signatures. From there, I picked up, copied my deed, and it's explicit where it says, number nine, nothing will be done on such lot which may be or become annoyance or nuisance to the other owners of the set lots around you to which the neighborhood situated in keeping of chickens or fowl, hogs, goats, sheep, cows, livestock, I didn't know, I was waiting for to move my kids, but other offensive animals and so forth, what would be regarded as a nuisance. So I took this and I also went over to the county and picked up a layout of our housing area, because it's this one, my deed specifies that I am in the second area of development. So I picked up that copy, I took it to my fair, I actually got an attorney for nine chickens, but I took that over there and him and I sat down and he kind of evaluated it. There were several things that he pointed out to give me some direction. And so once again, I put together my own sheet, started to go around this time to our second development area to get signatures again. And I was going to submit all of this to y'all so that you could take a look at and so forth. Turns around and I was taking my petition around. Also, once again, I did print out the restrictions on here and I took them to every person I was going to sign for to let them know. I didn't say an ordinance. I made sure I told them this was a restriction. And because you're talking two different things here. Some people don't mind signing ordinance, but they definitely may shake their heads at the restriction. So anyhow, I did start at that, then I run into a gentleman down the street from me and he was on that same map as being in the second lot in division. And he goes, no, I'm number one. I said, no, you can't. I showed him what I had. I showed it to him, the picture I took to my phone. And he just kept saying, no, him and I kind of like, we didn't, nope. We, we can't test, we just had differences of opinion. So and actually, in turn on all reality, he was right. And I may be a number one. Because when you go and you look at that same plaque, you look down at the bottom and it tells you that there were other measurements from lot number 38. And those were considered remeasured as lot one, complex one, whatever, long call. But it also refers to that number in the county's books. So my next step was going to go ahead and look that number up. But kind of make a long story short, because there's a lot of little things come into play, whether my deed's wrong, whether that lot restrictions are wrong, whether, whatever. But there's some other things that came into play with that, because I would have submitted everything I had to y'all and said, you know, these people don't mind it, no one's bothered it, most people didn't even know I had chickens. And so when I was looking at that, the restrictions and so forth, if that, and once again, I haven't conferred this with an attorney yet, but if the HOA, which we originally had one, was the ones that put the restrictions on, and they're no longer there, those restrictions may not apply to that housing area anymore. But I would still go and get signatures, not out to do anything else except for nine chickens.
Yeah.
And there was, if I could find who the initiator was of those restrictions and approach them and ask them, you know, can you please, I'm not interested in anybody else's lot, my lot, nine chickens, if they could consider reconsidering that one for my lot, because that's all I specified too when I went around my lot, so forth. So those are kind of the things I'm looking at now.
Okay, let me, let me, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure, your name is Jim?
Dave.
Okay, Dave, I'm sorry, Dave Mitchell. Dave Mitchell, okay, Dave Mitchell. Okay, Dave, I think we have two issues here. And I think that we as a city, Gary gave you some friendly advice about your deed, but I want to tell you that the city of Somersville, as a government, we're not the deed restrictions enforcers. And, you know, as you get an attorney and it's complicated and it's this and that, it used to be an HOA, that's really not our wheelhouse. And I think that what you got was some friendly, some friendly advice saying, hey, we potentially think that maybe your deed restricts you from being able to do this, okay? Now, what I'm curious of is you said, because I know that our ordinance, which has been out there for some time.
Right.
And I'm tickled to death that we finally have it on the agenda tonight so we can bring resolve to this issue. But in one part it says no, and the other part says you have to, you have to apply to the office of the recorder, which then comes to city council. So my question is, is did you apply to Gary for your chickens?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay.
This is what I was, can I just come up there?
Yeah, sure.
This is a copy of the ordinance at that time, I know.
Yeah, which is still the ordinance until we get this one passed.
And it tells y'all that you can file a permit.
Okay.
So I went and got my signatures to go with that.
Okay, okay.
And what I was going to do is bring everything all in one shot and say, here, here's what I've done. This I can submit. It's ready to go.
Okay.
And it's, I'm like you're saying, I'm not here.
Okay, so, so I think, you know, what I want to do is I want to check with the city attorney tomorrow, because I believe our ordinance says you can file for a permit and you can't. And then it'll go through the due process. Now, that doesn't mean that you're going to get to have chickens, because it'll go through the due process of the permit, because it's on the books. I don't know how we can deny you this. So, and what I'm going to do is ratify what I think tomorrow with the city attorney. But I believe, because our ordinance says you can do this, that you can. And it'll have to go through the due process. And quite frankly, because our ordinance says this, and there's been no action to nullify or tell you you can't do this, I think that you can do this until we have an ordinance that says you can't, because this is no longer applicable to the way we operate our city.
And that would have been another thing I'd brought up, is the fact that I've had it before the new ordinance, and would there be a Godfather that maybe that would be considered? Also, I'd invite you all out to tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, I think all of that will be a part of the process when you actually apply for a permit and it goes through the due process. I've sought previous council on deed restrictions, and I think you got friendly advice, but what we're going to do immediately, I believe, is exit stage right on that, because that gets real complicated. And we are not the deed restricted, you know, we don't, we didn't enforce those. I mean, we don't go through all the legal, the city's not going to spend the money to figure out legally and go back through history and did you have an HOA and how does this work? And then there are things all over this city that if that's what we're going to start doing too, is enforcing deeds, then we, you know, we're going to open up a can of worms that we don't want, quite frankly, we don't want to open up. What that becomes is if you have a neighbor which initially filed a complaint, then it becomes a civil issue. That neighbor then can take you to court and say, you know, you're violating your deed, and then, you know, be a complaint in that way. That would be something that would be handled by the courts, not city government. Okay? So, but what I want to be clear of, that doesn't mean that this body, who ultimately will make the decision on this process, that doesn't mean that at the end of the line, you're going to get to keep your chickens. Because I'll be honest and frank with you, we've had these discussions, and quite frankly, I think that what we don't want is chickens in the city, that, you know, we've had much discussion about this. And it's, you know, and again, we've never had an official vote, so I'm kind of talking out of school, but I'm being honest. You know, at the end of the day.
Would you like me to step back?
No, no, you're fine. I mean, yeah, you can step back there if you want. But anyway, so we got two issues, okay? Our ordinance that says you can file for this permit process, which I believe you still can, and we'll put it through the due process, but the deed situation, you were given advice, friendly advice to help you think, oh, you know, because, because what promulgated all this, the reason, the way we found out you had chickens is you had a neighbor complaint.
See, I also would like one mind seeing that copy of the complaint, not so much why I just want to see a copy of it.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't, I'm not privy to that. I don't know that it was even a formal complaint. I don't even know what I should say. No, 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 no. That's fair, that's fair. I would probably say the same thing. I don't know that it was a formal written complaint, you know, and we get calls, you know, I mean, I get calls daily, like I have today, about all kinds of stuff. So it could have been as simple as a phone call to say, hey, this gentleman's got chickens and, you know, you know, don't want chickens in the neighborhood. So, you know, it could be as simple as that that would, that would start our actions on code enforcement. So, but anyway.
Like, you can, Dave, if you'd like, I can make copies or?
No, what I, what I would like you to do is just come back to city hall tomorrow in a formal way and apply for, and apply for the permit.
That would be great, thank you.
Now, if you want to go back to the podium, what I would do is real quick, open it up to city council. Does anybody have any questions or any comments to it?
Not this time.
Yeah.
I'm happy this time.
Okay. Okay, do you have any other questions?
No, but I'd like to tell you, it all started way in, we batted some beeps.
Okay.
And then actually, I'm sharing, because we picked up, I think this is our third dozen, so we have nine, so we're not going to use all of them. But the thing was, now our neighbors getting along and so forth, we're not like, my family, if you ever go up there on Halloween, you won't believe it, because we give out hamburgers, hot dogs and stuff like that, reason being, you've got to go to work. But anyway.
Okay, thank you. And if I've given you any misinformation, I'll run what I just told you back through the city attorney in the morning. Quite frankly, I don't believe I have.
Y'all look great, you really are. I appreciate your frankness and everything, because it's, I think y'all are good people. I mean, I really do. I don't know how much I appreciate this man.
And you know, and the thing of it is, is, you know, even being a country boy myself, born and raised in the country, on a farm, dairy farm, you know, I like farm animals. I like chickens. And what I just want you to understand, don't take the actions of this body personally.
I don't.
Because what we do is we represent the greater population of the city.
I understand.
And all of us have constituents, and so when we, when it comes to a vote, you know, we listen to our constituents and that vote will be the outcome of not necessarily what we want personally, but what the people we represent want. So.
Totally understand.
Yep. And listen, I respect big time, Dave, your, your being so professional and handling it the way you are. So.
Well, that's easy to deal with these folks, I don't know.
Good deal. I like to hear that. That's very positive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Appreciate the time.
Yep, thank you. Amy, anybody else? Okay, good deal. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda, tonight's agenda is appointment of Sherri Young to the Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th of 2026.
Move to approve?
Second. Got a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. Okay, council, I have prepared an ordinance to maybe bring us up to modern day times, and this is the ordinance that deals with pertaining to compensation for elected officials. And so what I would like to do is read this ordinance and then get a motion for the first reading and then open it up for discussion. Per the ordinance pertaining to compensation for elected officials passed by council on 5823, members of Somersville City Council will receive $325 per each meeting of council, which you currently do. Members must be present at the meeting to be paid for that meeting. This is what I'm recommending that we, the addendum. To be paid for a Somersville City Council meeting, the council person must be physically present at the meeting. Exceptions. If a declared state of emergency is in effect which limits travel and/or group meetings, remote attendance will be compensated. Quite frankly, we probably should have changed this during the pandemic when we had virtual meetings. Item number two exception is, if due to health issues, the council person cannot be physically present, the mayor may allow remote attendance to be compensated on a case-by-case basis. So obviously, if somebody's sick and can't get to council, and, you know, there are many reasons that people could be under treatment and be able to attend a meeting, but it's not good for them to get out and get around people, I think that we should be allowed to have council join us, representing their constituents if those circumstances are present. Number three, if the mayor deems that the business before council is of extreme significance and a council person is out of town or otherwise unavailable to physically attend, the mayor may allow remote attendance to be compensated on a case-by-case basis. So therefore, if we have a vote that's going to take place that is of significant, you know, outcomes or, I think it also is important that you're allowed to represent your constituents. And so therefore, on a case-by-case basis, if there is something on the agenda that I think it's important that you all participate, number one, maybe to hear what the issuer situation is, but number two, then to express your comments and then vote, that too would allow for me, if somebody's on vacation or whatever, to allow for remote attendance. Note, West Virginia Code 6-982, core means the gathering of simple majority of the constituent members of a governing body unless applicable laws provide for varying the required ratio. So with that said, what I would do is entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
Okay, Chuck first, Wayne the second, and open for discussion. Anybody, any discussion? Any comments? Okay. Indeed, for the first reading, which we've had, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion so carries. First reading goes in the books. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the first reading of a revised draft article 505, Animal and Fowl Ordinance. Okay, total disclosure here. We have Gary, who chairs the planning and zoning, who sends this to us via their recommendation. And we also have councilman Epling and councilman Waters, who both serve on that committee. And to not, to not forget, this has been an ordinance that's been going back and forth for some time. So clarify down there at the end, our newly elected councilman, BJ, served as a citizen on the planning and zoning for, what BJ, good couple of terms, didn't he? Yeah. So for at least four years. So we've got a lot of experience on here and previously. So what I would like to do, this is a very lengthy ordinance, so what I would like to do, this has been published and available, and sir, I don't know if you've got the opportunity to read it and see it yet, but if you haven't, we can get you a copy of it. And sir, I don't know if that's what you're here for tonight, but we'd be willing to give you a copy too. But what I would like you to do, Gary, is go through and point out the items of significance, that would be things that were changing in this ordinance as part of the presentation, i.e. reading, and then we'll put it in a form of a motion and discuss.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. That is what I've done. I think in your packets, you should have this information, and we tried to simplify that down on this first page. I'll go ahead and read it. If you want to read along with me. I will tell you that one of the things that the planning and zoning is really taking a look at when we look at these ordinances, we feel that in a lot of cases, our ordinances are very confusing and sometimes very hard to follow. And there's some things in those ordinances that are just difficult for our citizens at times to look at and understand, and at times even have to go get attorneys to read them out to take. So we're trying to simplify them down a little bit, and that's what we're doing, and we've done that in this case. But to begin with, an ordinance of the council of the city of Somersville, West Virginia, amending the code of the city of Somersville, Article 505, Animals and Fowl. The code is being amended to simplify it and to take our repetitive sections such as 505.03, Keeping of Hogs, and take out the Permit Section 505.04, Permit Required to Keep Animal and Fowl, nuisances. The council of the city of Somersville, West Virginia hereby ordains, the code of the city of Somersville, West Virginia is hereby amended by deleting sections 505.03 and 505.04. And it's as follows, and I would like to go ahead and read it. 505.03, we deleted that, it was Keeping of Hogs. No person shall keep or permit to be kept any swine or hog within the corporate limits of the city. I will say, there are a couple of areas that our grandfather, from years ago, that are, that are in our city, but there's only two that we are aware of. So I wanted to let you know that. 505.04 was the real meat of what we worked on. It was a bit confusing. It was allowing the city recorder to do permits and then go to the city council for approval. We've tried to, this is, this is what it read. No live poultry, fowl, or animal of any kind, except dogs and cats, shall be kept in the city without the owner thereof having received a permit so to do from the city recorder and approval of council. No charge will be made for such permit, but it will only be granted upon agreement that the stable, barn, coop, or other place where such animal, poultry or fowl is to be kept, shall be constructed in such a manner that it can be kept and maintained in a dry, clean, and sanitary condition, free from offensive odors. Application for such permit shall be accompanied by a certificate signed by a majority of the householders residing within a radius of 500 feet from the place where such stable, barn, coop, etc., is proposed to be located, provided that no barn, stable, coop, or other place where any fowl, animal, fowl, or poultry is kept or is to be kept, shall be built, used, or maintained within 50 feet of any house inhabited by human beings and unless built and maintained in a clean, dry, and sanitary condition, and free from offensive odors, and provided further, that none of the above enumerated poultry, fowl, or animals shall be allowed to run at large, but shall be housed in a suitable enclosure, which shall be kept thoroughly clean and inobjectively at all times. Upon the failure of any owner or occupant of any premises to comply with any of the provisions of this section, such barn, stable, coop, etc., shall be deemed a nuisance, and as such shall be removed or abated as provided by law. So those are the, those are the items that we took out. Okay? If you go on through and look, you will see that the 505.04 has been replaced, it's still in the ordinance, but what we did was moved up the sections, okay? So once we took out that, we corrected the numbers in the ordinance so that they would still remain in the proper line. So those are what we took out. Does anybody have any questions on those?
So can you point out in this new ordinance where it says that you cannot have?
Sure. So if you go to, yeah, 505.18, it's on the very last page, and you'll find that, in our opinion, it's very, it's cleaner, and I will read that to you. 505.18, as farm animals prohibited in the city, it shall be unlawful for any person living in the city to keep on any premises in the corporate limits, any horses, ponies, or mules, or other beasts of burden, as well as any kind of livestock, cattle, poultry, or swine. It shall be likewise unlawful for any person who is not a resident of the city, but who owns property in the corporate limits to permit others to keep horses, ponies, mules, or other beasts of burden, as well as any kind of livestock, cattle, poultry, or swine in the corporate limits. When a violation is found to exist, each day that the violator remains in violation, so constitute a new and separate offense. So that is what it's replaced with. I think you'll see that it's much simpler and cleaner than the other proposed. I could hardly read through the first one.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's very hard to go through, but I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yeah, they put a lot of work into this, and we certainly have had it on the docket for quite some time.
Okay, so let's get it first and a second. Got a first?
Okay.
A second?
Give Wayne and Jim.
Okay, council, this is your opportunity to express opinions. This is the first reading. Any comments, council comments?
I'll start off, in respect to Mr. Mitchell. I dealt with an issue over the last couple of years that, not necessarily chickens, but our ducks and yeast we have in certain pond areas in town. And as we know, on the outskirts of Ward 1, where we're at, is a little bit of forest. Yes, we cross, we cross a road, but in the same area, there's a group of houses that we started to see some coyotes moving in, and we did have an issue with it. And a concern brought to me by citizens in our ward was, they're getting close, we've got kids, other animals, the cats and dogs. So that has been brought up over the last couple of years that we've had to deal with, and it's right on Webster Road. So that is a concern that I think of as well for our community, just for the sole fact that where you and I live, we have children and we've got cats and dogs. So that is a concern for me. Yes, we have that fence, but it's never stopped a bear or a coyote. Yes, we have that fence, but it's never stopped a bear or a coyote, or even a little fox to make it into our community. So those are a few things that concern me and some of our others, and if that has been brought to my attention over the last two years, especially when we've talked about a couple small locations that had chickens nowhere near as nice as yours, as far as the facility that you offer, because they didn't even have one. Those are concerns that have been brought to my attention, so just full disclosure on that, I don't know if anybody, if you've got any of those phone calls as well, and it's closer to you than me, but I happen to know those folks that live in that area, so, and you live right across the street from it.
I'd like to second that too. Of course, like the mayor mentioned, I was part of this with the Planning and Zoning when it first came out, it's been a couple, three years now, it's been talked about a lot. To Stevie's point, and I've been talking to neighbors and the constituents as well, the predator threat is a big deal, it is. And me, I've been an avid predator hunter for several years, and, and a lot of people go on odor, and that's not the case, the smallest sounds pull these predators in, and then you got a threat to domestics, you got a threat to children, you know, and then just the danger of having predators around, it's a real thing. And, and that's a big thing, some of that.
May I ask you to speak a little louder?
Sorry. It is a real deal, the predators, that the, that the fowls bring in, not only fowls, but even domestics, you know, puppies and stuff like that can bring these predators in, and that's been a concern of a lot of neighbors over the past couple of years, have we been talking through this. And I don't know if you heard, but I, I have been an avid predator hunter, and it's a big deal, they are nearby, and it's, it's hard to accept the fact of pulling them in closer, you know? And that, to his point, that has been a concern among a lot of neighbors.
Okay. Anybody else?
I live on the outside edge of town, and across the street from me were chickens and, well, cows and everything, but they're out of town. And there's nothing I can do about that, but they did bring in a lot of cows and things, but they were running loose though. And even dogs and cats and everything, they would come and get them, so they were gone. So in the town, I don't know if that'd be the best place to have a chicken around, I really, I mean, that's, I understand your point, went you doing and have a good life, but the cows do come around.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think it's a matter of enforcement too, you know, we've got one code official, he's got his hands full a lot of times looking at other kinds of ordinances and enforcements and different things like that. And I don't know whether it's fair to him maybe to put chicken enforcement or whatever on, on his plate. I know he's had a lot of difficulty with our present ordinance, of course. It says one thing in one place and another thing allows it, so I think we have to clarify it in some form, and this is what we came up with. Another thing that comes to mind is, is property values, you know, it's planning and zoning folks, you know, we have to look out for property values, you know, help people maintain property values from that city. So, you know, if, if we cannot enforce an ordinance like this, you know, that would, I mean, an ordinance that would allow chickens, then, you know, we'd have a problem with, you know, people complaining about degrading their property values and that kind of thing, adjacent property. So I think it's, it's a pretty tough ordinance to try to enforce under our current situation here in town, you know, we have one code official, so I think for a town this size, you know, it's going to be very difficult to, you know, it's kind of like running dogs too and other things, I mean, do we want our code official to spend his time building this or other things? So I think there's a case to be made, we, I think we looked under most of the rocks and considered most of the issues that surround this, this particular ordinance, so there's a lot of things that would point to maybe restrict, make the kind of restrictions that we have recommended in this ordinance. So not to say that Mr. Mitchell or some other folks might be entirely responsible and have good, clean facilities and all that kind of stuff, but as you know, we recently had a situation where I think some chickens were running loose in town, and it caused a lot of, a lot of problems, and particularly with the code official and neighbors and other things, so that, that's some of the reasons why we came up with this, this decision, I mean, this ordinance in this way presented in this way, so.
Okay. Okay, everybody that's wanted a voice, it sounds like we have, so what I'll do is I'll call for the vote. All those in favor for the first reading and passage that would bring it back to the next meeting for the second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, moving right along. Next item on the agenda is approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four general fund budget revision number one. This, basically, this revision right now is about bringing some more carry forward. This is excess revenue carried forward from last fiscal year, both monies that weren't spent and also revenue that we've received far and above what we estimated we would. So our original budget, we anticipated that we were going to have one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars in, in unassigned carry forward balance. Tonight, we add another five hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to that, bringing the total to one million, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. I will tell you, council, that as soon as we get, we, last week, we're still receiving some of the balance of due funds, B and O funds, so probably the next meeting or the first meeting in September, we'll have our final carry forward, and I do estimate that we've probably got another sum of monies equal to what we're carrying forward tonight that will be the final carry forward. With that, we're also adding twenty-five thousand dollars, which is monies we received from a mapping grant. We're adding a couple of state grants, one for forty-one thousand, which is sidewalk, one for three hundred and sixty thousand, which is sidewalk. The first one was engineering, the second one was actual sidewalk project itself. And then finally, we have six hundred and eighty thousand dollars miscellaneous revenue. Council, this is the revenue that we have transferred from the hydro account, and we're also receiving from others that will pay for the study. And so that brings the hydro funding in this year's budget to one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So now that we added the revenue, let's go down and spend it. We, in the finance department, I'm recommending that we put five thousand dollars in personal services, and this is for wage revisions. The next item would be code enforcement, thirty-five thousand, and if you remember, you approved the demolition, purchase and demolition of that house on Arbuckle Road, I can tell you that due to the advice from the city attorney, we're going to appropriate the money, but we're not going to move it all, and I've also corresponded with the current property owner, which happens to be an attorney in Parkersburg, that the city is no longer interested in moving on that right now, due to the fact that there's still, you know, and actually, quite frankly, the gentleman that's sitting on it now didn't even know it, but when Greg went, when Greg Tucker, our city attorney, went to do his due diligence, the original individual that lost that property on a tax sale can come back up to April fifteenth and buy that property back for the taxes, which is a little over two thousand dollars, which would be the tax and interest. So I, quite frankly, made the decision that I couldn't see us putting thirty thousand dollars into a piece of property and somebody could come and take it back at the end of the day for two thousand dollars. So what I did is I reached out to the attorney, we, in lieu of the fact that we were going to buy it, we had started mowing it, and then there were a few other things that we were going to do. As a matter of fact, another idea that I'd even floated and had the fire department look at is there was a chance that they were even going to use it for some training, not to burn it down, but do some smoking in the house before they, before we tore it down, some training. But all that's been set aside, that will probably not take place, and then the fire department decided that it wasn't really equipped to do the training. But what, where we're at right now, as I told the attorney, and, and he had one individual that might be interested in buying, actually, he bought it thinking he could make it an Airbnb and didn't realize the property doesn't even have parking. You know, that, there's not even any parking at that house, you've got to park across the street on, on, on Arbuckle Road. So what I told him is the city would wait till April fifteenth, but the property still has to be addressed a little bit, the stairs need taken off, if you drive by, you see how the stairs are all crashed down, and then it needs to be continued, the mowing needs to continue. So what I told him, he thought he might have one other individual interested, so I told him respectfully, we are going to move forward, I've communicated this to the code official, we are going to move forward with the legal means of declaring that a dilapidated property. And the reason that we're doing that is, that is a process that is very lengthy and takes time, and what I don't want to do is wait for somebody to buy it and then them not do anything with it, or go back to the original property owner and them not do anything with it. So we're going to start the proceedings now on dilapidated property. And then what we will do, when April fifteenth rolls around and that gentleman no longer has the right to come back and take it, we will exercise our right to purchase it at that time. In the meantime, I offer to the current individual that owns the property now, living in Parkersburg, that we would continue to mow the grass and take the stairs off the front of the house at a, at a charge that would be deducted from our purchase from him, that you all already authorized to purchase. And now, it's still not going to look good, we'll tear the stairs down, we'll keep the grass mowed, April fifteenth of next year, we'll buy the property and move forward with our original plans. He no longer wants the property and doesn't have plans to do so. So that's where we're at on that. So we got to appropriate those monies, if they're spent, to buy the property which you've previously authorized. Another twenty-seven thousand would be for the executive assistant. I've had much discussion with you all and told you that I wanted to budget for an assistant to the mayor, so that is the twenty-seven thousand dollars for the funding for that position. Also, we're going to add twenty-five thousand dollars to contractual. When you put the revenue in at the top for the mapping grant, we're going to put it under city hall contractual, so twenty-five thousand is for the mapping grant, and then the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we added to the hydro revenue, bringing in as hydro revenue, we're spending it down here in city hall contractual for the hydro study. Then you got police contractual, I'm asking to add twelve thousand dollars for body cameras. Police commodities, I'm asking to add fifteen thousand, eighteen dollars for three laptops and three desktop computers and vehicle tires for the police department. Also, it's the final carry forward, I'm asking to deduct in the budget confiscated property, as we use the coal severance funding and the police department's confiscated property. Coal severance was approved in the last budget, the compensated property funds set there to be spent wherever they need to be spent, so there was a vehicle purchase at the end of last fiscal year, so therefore, we're deducting the actual carry forward of those funds to the, that we're decreasing them thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, which brings it to thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Then we move to the street department, I'm asking that we add nineteen thousand, three hundred to, for the paving of the old, the old main walking trail. Forty-one thousand to the sidewalk project engineering, again, we brought the revenue in the top, we spent it in the bottom. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the sidewalk project, and then, of course, we've got a ninety thousand match already in the budget, which is our part, this is the state's part, and then eighty-eight thousand, five hundred for additional sidewalk projects, base one. So in other words, we've got ninety thousand in the budget already, and we're still in a quagmire with the sidewalk, I'm going to discuss it tonight in, in mayor's report, because I don't know if we're ever going to get this sidewalk built with the delays of the fabulous system that we have to walk through, that, that quite frankly, I'm very displeased state government. Anyway, we have to add, as those project members are coming in, just to do the, the little bit of sidewalk now that we want to do, it will cost us another eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, I'm asking that we add that to the budget for that sidewalk project. Then we move right down the line to street commodities, I'm asking to add twenty-five thousand for Christmas decorations. Parks and Rec contractual, twenty-five thousand for city beautification, as we're going to go through some transitions with that committee, and hopefully, citywide, do continued partnerships with businesses and citizens for city beautification. Fairs and festivals, add twenty-five thousand dollars for city promotions, bringing that light on into eighty-five thousand. Let me back up. Street department commodities with that twenty-five thousand brings it to one thirty-five. Parks and Rec contractual adding twenty-five thousand to beautification brings that to six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Then you've got the Iranian Conference Center Personnel Services. Council, I'm asking that we consider to start transferring all those employees to our city budget, and ideally, at some point in time, all finances will be in-house, but I'm asking, last fiscal year, we added, actually, this fiscal year, we added already the assistant director, which is currently working, and so now what I'm also asking is, is that we consider effective one-one of twenty-four, adding the facilities manager and the kitchen manager. And I got to tell you, we're having a heck of a time trying to keep people at the hourly wages without benefits and it's just a revolving door. So this money will not only add these folks, but also give them benefits. Now remember, when you look down at that number, the thing that's tricky about that is that's just fifty percent, because we're only, it's only six months worth of funding, it's not, it's not twelve months. Both of those positions, one's going to advertise at forty, and one's going to advertise at forty-five. Then I, moving right along, ask to add ninety-three thousand, and this is actual carry forward funding, because it wasn't spent last year, we actually got the big sign up out of Route nineteen, that's for the Iranian Conference Center, it's not lit up because we've just had some, you know, the power company had prior, with, with some of the storms of weather that we've had, you know, we're on the docket to get it hooked up, but obviously, that's not a priority, putting power back in businesses and people's homes, so that should happen soon, so we couldn't expend those funds last fiscal year, we're going to go ahead and move them to this fiscal year. So it's money you've already approved, we're just moving it from one fiscal year to the next. But that's why the sign's not lit, but it's on the docket, the power company's been very gracious to work with us, it should happen real soon. The next item is Brown Oaks Personal Services. We kind of run into a little quagmire, not just with Brown Oaks, but also with utilities, both of which I'm managing, our part-time people are getting too many hours, and so we have to manage that so that we legally comply and get by through our audits, so therefore, we have to add more part-time people, because in some cases, we have part-time people that are working hours that we have to really float out and mess with because they're bordering being full-time employees. So anytime a part-time employee works regularly, thirty hours or more, you know, there's, there's situations. So we're looking at hiring another part-time person to help the director at the Brown Oaks, and that's a big job, you know, they've increased the activity there, and unfortunately, it's, you know, cause for the director to have to come and go a lot just because of the rental volume. The next item would be a hundred thousand dollars for Brown Oaks, and this is for building improvements. We've got some real issue with the flooring in the carriage house, there's a tree that's coming up through the floor, so this is going to take care of that. The other thing that we're going to do, as the expansion in a positive way has taken place and, and made that place much more viable and utilization is off the charts, we're also going to add outdoor restrooms that will be added to the carriage house. If you've ever looked around, there's a little shed area where the tractor's parked, we're going to move the tractor out and turning that into outdoor restrooms that will, that will be available for all the activity that takes place on the property. And last but not least, going to throw fifty thousand dollars in contingencies, and this is something that I will try to do under my administration with your all's support. Indeed, we went to, we transferred to the pool, there's never been an assessment in the pool, but I think it's always prudent for us to carry a reserve, that's with our insurance. When we looked at things and kind of put things in perspective and talked, you know, what if the pool, the insurance pool that all the four counties are in and fifty-five percent of the cities are in, we join that insurance pool, what I would like to do is always carry on our balance statement monies in case we're ever assessed, we've got them in there. So that fifty thousand dollars will sit in contingency, so in the event that there ever would be assessment, there never has been an assessment, but if there would, we've got the money sitting in our budget to face them. So what I would do is ask for a motion for approval, and then I'll open up for discussion and questions. and questions.
Who approve a second?
Got a first and a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion so carries. Okay, recorder's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I've probably spoken a little too much tonight, so I'll make it brief. Um, our next meeting, and we're jumping, no time off for planning and zoning, we're jumping right on into, uh, areas of tiny homes and things of this nature. Uh, our next meeting will be Monday night at 6 o'clock. Encourage all to join, and, uh, if not, give me, give us a call Tuesday, and I'll, I'll give you a briefing on, on what took place. I also want to go ahead and do this, I know, uh, Jay's not here today, uh, but I do want everybody to know that the recorder office will be administering, uh, civil service tasks. We have, it's pleasantly happy with, um, the number of applicants we got for this test. Uh, we have been struggling getting applicants, uh, in the prior tests, and we, it seems like we've tested a lot lately. Um, but in this test, we, we've got several applicants, so it's very exciting. Uh, Mayor, you may know, I believe, we're, we have two openings maybe? Is that right?
Yeah.
I think it's two. Um, so, you know, we're, we're excited to have, uh, several applicants this time, and that test should be administered in the next week and a half to two weeks.
Yeah. Had, um, we've had one that just flat out resigned, um, and then, um, we've had one that's put us on notice that he's basically met all of the qualifications and will hear in the near future. He's still on our payroll, but in the near future, he will transition to being a state patrol. Um, he, uh, finished up the final bit of the qualifications for that and is now just waiting for, um, a call to start class. Or to go to, go to the academy.
So just so everybody knows, I, I attend that, that, uh, test along with, uh, a representative of, of that civil service commission. So we'll do that in the next week and a half, two weeks. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the generous mayor's report. Council, I got quite a bit of stuff I want to run down. Gary always makes me look bad by saying that I've already talked too much, I'm not going to say anymore. Well, I've talked a lot and I'm going to say some more. Um, first thing I want to do, council, just give you an update. The rainy day fund, um, after we added at the end of the fiscal year, this is affected, this is as of 6/30/23, after we added the interest, um, uh, the rainy day fund has That is, uh, as of, uh, end of last fiscal year. Um, so, and then also, um, uh, it won't be long and we'll be taking that out again, um, for consideration. We'll put it out for bid again because, um, it won't be too much longer and the current CD will be due. Actually, it's, um, uh, before this fiscal year, I should just give you the date, it's, um, 5-2 of 24. So before this fiscal year ends, we'll be putting that back out for bid. Right now, we're getting 3.75%. Uh, okay, so the next item I want to give you some heads up on is, um, notice to residents and businesses of the city of Somersville. Um, waterworks will be flushing our fire hydrants from August 21st through September 11th, weather permitting. Please use extreme caution when cooking and doing laundry during this time period, as you may experience some color dis- uh, some discoloration in the water. If you have any questions, please call the water plant, um, or city office here. Um, the water plant is 872-3347, or city hall at 872-1211. Um, flushing begins in the day at 8:00 AM and ends at 4:00 PM. Quite frankly, what you're going to find out is there's absolutely nothing wrong with that water. Um, sometimes when the water gets a little stagnant in some areas and doesn't move in the lines, um, it can give you, um, a coloration that, um, sometimes looks dirty or, um, whatever. It's still healthy, it still meets all the standards to be consumed. What we worry about more than anything is somebody doing a load of white laundry and ruining your, you know, your clothes. So, um, please, uh, be aware, um, the flushing is going to take place again, August 21st through September 11th. Um, the next thing I'd like to talk about is, um, the memorandum of agreement, um, that was, uh, authorization for me to sign, um, in the special meeting, which is the city of Somersville, um, Corps of Engineers study, uh, that we're paying $679,500 for. Uh, I received, uh, late this afternoon, the final documents, um, from, uh, the secretary's office, the US Army Assistant Secretary's Office. Those documents have been reviewed and approved, um, and so, um, in a, in a very positive way, um, what has delayed that from your authorization, um, unfortunately, at the 12th hour, um, contractually, LS Power, which is the operator of the hydro plant, um, was to pay 50% of the study. Um, I finally received and, and been in constant contact with the players. Um, they hired, um, uh, a, a third-party, um, client Schmidt, um, to do a financial analysis. Um, what their concern was, um, because their contract expires and all of that reverts back to the city of Somersville, um, July 1st of 2031. Um, what their fear was, is could they recoup their money? Um, you know, were they going to be able to recoup the investment? Um, so they did hire a third party. I finally got notified late Friday afternoon that they were in. Um, now, just straight up, they knew, um, because I had communicated, uh, with them that they, even if they weren't in, um, we were moving forward with the study. And I'd also communicated that to the secretary's office, uh, that we were moving forward. Um, but I will tell you that our funds have been transferred from the hydro fund, and, um, we will be invoicing, um, tomorrow, um, LS Power, who is going to pay, um, their half, which is the, uh, figure, what did I figure that was? $379,000, um, dollars, some, something of that sum. I was, I thought I read it down here, but I guess, no, actually I haven't. Anyway, they're, they're paying half of the, uh, uh, 679,500. We're paying half, they're paying half. Okay, so, uh, that's exciting, and then, uh, with that, um, I was notified late afternoon, um, Robin Calissimo, who is the, um, Legislative Affairs for the Assistant Secretary of the Army, um, reached out to me late afternoon, and, um, real soon, we meet the team that's actually going to do the study, um, but she wants one wrap-up call. And I got to tell you, I'm excited about the call tomorrow because I have nothing but positive to say about the professionalism that we've had with the US Army Corps of Engineers through this process. It's been incredible. I mean, we asked questions, they facilitated everything we wanted to do. LS Power, in their query as to whether they were going to participate or not, wanted a second round with the secretary's office, which I set up and facilitated that meeting with them. I'm just telling you, the, um, the Assistant Secretary of the Army, which that office is ultimately responsible for the US Army Corps of Engineers, it's been exceptional, and the professionals have been off the top in the way they've handled us through this process. So, um, you know, I'm excited that, um, in a very positive way, we're going to move forward with them doing a study, um, and then of course, the outcome is the outcome. And of course, we hope and pray that it favors us and we'll be able to do some of the things that we want to do. Quite frankly, they've already indicated that there are probably some simple things that will be a result that will happen sooner than later.
What time's that call tomorrow?
Um, 3 o'clock. You're welcome to join me if you would like.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, is this financial analysis by this partner that they have hired? We are invoicing LS Power for their half up now?
Yes.
But they're the one that did a study?
No, they already did it. They completed.
They did?
Yeah, they actually, I, I can't imagine what they paid for that third party to come in and do it. So it had already been done.
I thought they had done some analysis on the room.
They did, and Jim, Jim had, Jim had, you know, worked it, worked it, worked it. They had worked theirs together, but at the end of the day, the higher-ups, the, the, um, you know, the CEO and COO and all of that at LS Power said, "We, we want a, we want a third party to review this and do some computation on, you know, is this stuff going to, are we going to be able to recoup our investment?"
And that's already been done?
It's already been done.
I mean, we just had this meeting.
They did it anyway. Yeah, so actually, and actually, if you go Google that outfit, they're big time, and I'd say they paid some, they paid another hefty chunk of money to have that done.
But that's great partnership. I'm glad they were able to do that.
Not used to things happening that quick.
And, and, you know, I wasn't, I was not mean to them, but I told them that if they didn't participate, if I didn't have the commitment when I signed the document, you're outside the sandbox. And I meant, you will not send these meetings, you will not know what's going on, and, you know, unfortunately, um, you know, there, there potentially could be some good things happening for them down the road, even to continue a relationship with us and the hydro power. A lot of those decisions are to be made. I will tell you right now, they're begging on a regular basis to extend the contract, at which we're refusing to do, um, because there's a whole lot of things that we got to figure out and weigh out. Um, and so, um, you know, I just told them that if you, you know, uh, you just don't want to shut that door, because actually, what would have been the next steps contractually, they had to pay. So what we would have done probably is taken them to court to get them to pay. So, but, um, anyway, any other questions about that? Okay, um, I also just, council, I wanted to let you know, and I think this is a positive thing, um, District 9 Engineer Jim Moore reached out to me and asked me if I would do a letter to, um, the US Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, um, to support some monies that they're trying to get for the city of Richwood, um, to raise Route 39 because of the flooding. And, uh, that letter will go out of the office of the mayor tomorrow, where I'm going to issue a letter to, um, the Honorable Pete Buttigieg, the Secretary of Transportation, and tell him that the city of Somersville supports, um, this funding for the city of Richwood for that issue with the Route 39 that runs through their city. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to let you know that. Um, let's see, um, so, a couple of things I'd like to tell you, um, I did an addendum to the lease that we have, uh, with the, uh, B&amp;L Development Limited Liability Company, which is, um, the Bright family, um, that owns the property that has, uh, been transitioned to, um, the new, um, Somersville Lake State Park. Um, incidentally, they don't close on that for two weeks. We already had the insurance on the property and we're covering that exposure, um, of the rock climbers that were parking on the property and then walking back to do the rock climbing. So honestly, at the 12th hour, I got a call from the state and the Bright family asking if I would be kind enough to extend the city's insurance to the property so that the process could go forward without any reservation. Called the insurance company, said we were going to make an addendum to the lease, um, because basically, um, what you probably didn't see, and thank all of you for showing up for that awesome day, um, but they've already, um, put another parking lot that's back in the, back in there for the rock climbers to go, and, uh, and they're, of course, they're all tickled to death. But anyway, uh, probably, um, what they told me when I, um, signed this addendum to the lease, um, which is right here, uh, what they told me was that, um, probably in about two weeks, they'll close on the property, at which time this lease will be canceled. Um, so right now, with the rock climbing activity, which is the gist of the activity, um, our insurance is still covering that exposure. Um, incidentally, I found it kind of interesting, the state could not put insurance on it because they didn't own it yet. Um, so the closing is to take place here in the next couple of weeks. Um, then I would like to talk about, just real quick, um, uh, you know, um, that whole process of signing of the legislation, what, what a remarkable day, um, you know, um, and, and I just want to speak to, um, uh, you know, us being blessed to have a state park, um, and, and then, and then soon, which I hope for the years out, to have, um, the ribbon cutting of our recreational park, which is 128 acres. Both ends of our city will be booked, booked in by these incredible parks, a state park and our city recreational park. I have tremendous respect for, for people that have comments to say that are negative relative to our support, um, specifically, the comments that have come to me have been because of my support of the state park. And, and their concerns are legitimate, but I got to tell you, you know, it, it took me some time to reflect because initially, I think in life, when you're real positive about something, and I am super positive, I cannot even begin to think about what this is going to do to sustain our community. First of all, whether people like it or not, with, with the, the unfortunateness of the natural resources in this state, um, the coal industry which has run away from us, um, and timber which is up and down because it's controlled so much by the foreign markets, um, you know, we in southern West Virginia have capitalized on tourism. Um, we're now going to have a state park that's the gateway to the new national park that was designated last year. And, and the whole idea and com- uh, uh, concept of that is, is you capitalize on what you can, and I refuse to let this city die on a vine because we're not going to figure out how to manage people to come and visit us in our beautiful state. And not only that, it's what we do for our citizens. These amenities are available to our citizens, and it's the very things that we can do and create so some point in time, they can bring their kids home here to live. And we don't hear all those horrible stories about, "We raised kids and they got to go everywhere else to be employed." So I don't, I don't disregard the negative comments, but I do say this, when the negative comments start coming about this park and how horrible it was going to be because right now, we may not be equipped to handle the traffic that it brings, and that's a fair comment. That's a fair comment. But I say this, I go back to 1966, when the dam legislation was signed by President Johnson, and the horrible things that it probably did to the community at that time. I mean, it took people's homes away, and look at what we have today. And these are things that sometimes have to be done if you're going to have a vision. Number one, we have to realize that first and foremost, the lake was, the lake was built for flood control. But in that original piece of legislation, it not only says that, it also addresses recreation. And so, um, this, building this park plays right into the legislation that, that, that was signed, um, national legislation that was signed, bill that was signed that, that formed Somersville Lake. So we will continue to be mindful of the concerns of local people and the issues they bring, um, but I will tell you that we're going to continue to plug away. I appreciate all your support. Um, all of you were at that signing, a very important day, and I believe that that day will go down as another day of history for our area, just like the signing of the dam. So, um, again, anybody else want to make any comments? I'm excited, and we are going to partner and work with the state. They have put on the fast track, the visitor's center that we're going to partner with them on. It will be a combined visitor's center, uh, the city of Somersville, Nicholas County, um, the county's also going to participate in it, and the state of West Virginia. Um, and I've got some insight on it, but again, um, as things are going to be developed, I'm not going to throw things out because we've not had the first set down till yet. They tell me they're going to do it real quick, because they're actually going to bring in, I was informed a week ago that they're going to bring in a mobile unit, and they're going to have visitor's center real quick. And part of that is our CDB playing a role in that. So, uh, we've got a, we've got some things that we're going to have to put on the fast track, but it's exciting. And then when you really get down to the nuts and bolts of what they're going to do, um, you know, I, I was excited to see, um, some of the, uh, you know, we had, we had, we had some people from, uh, not just Nicholas County, but other surrounding counties, and let me tell you something, um, this park is going to be built where people will play there and stay somewhere else. Um, you know, if the park's full, this is going to help our campgrounds, and those folks were there, and we're just as excited about the designation as the state park as we are. So anyway, anybody else want to make any comments about, um, the new, uh, the, uh, the 36th state park in our great state, um, Somersville Lake State Park? How excited is that? Anybody else going to say anything?
Somebody else says that. I don't want to be one of my colleagues about this. I think, uh, I think it's positive and that positive, and, uh, the whole area, I think, as the governor indicated, uh, you know, from, uh, the national park, uh, whitewater rafting, the river, the, uh, of course, Somersville Lake and the golly whitewater, and, you know, the, it's just becoming a tremendous, um, tourism attraction, this part of the, the state. And, uh, I think that has to be a good, a good thing. And, uh, I just salute, uh, the governor and, uh, making the announcement, and, uh, I think we have some good things to look forward to. Not just, not just with this, but I don't think we, we felt the impact of the, uh, national park designation yet fully. And of course, the Bechtel Summit, you know, the Boy Scout, uh, property at Glengene, I mean, it's, it's drawing, it's, it is really putting, uh, this part of the state and also the state of West Virginia on the map nationally. on the map nationally and internationally, a lot of these things. So I think it's a huge positive. And like you mentioned, you know, we'd like to kind of stay in the past maybe, and we all grew up in the coal economy in West Virginia, this part of the state. And it's not here, and I can't see that it's ever going to be here again. And I think this is just a tremendous way of keeping our economy alive in this part of the state. So, thank you. It's a positive.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else?
I was, could they have called it just Somersville State Park? Because it's kind of confusing, Somersville Lake State Park.
I think some of that is because it's right beside the lake.
Yeah, because people think it's part of the lake.
Well, that's the other thing that we just talked about too, with the lake, it's, I mean, that's owned by the Army, the Corps of Engineers, I mean, that's, it is for flood control and recreation. So, the statement that it's, well, they're bound, the state's, the lake is maybe part of the park, it's truly not, because it's Corps of Engineers.
So, it's my understanding, and again, I reference, or I repeat that, it's my understanding of the information I've been provided, that the state will lease all of that frontage property. So, it will be a state frontage property lake, that's why they named it Somersville Lake State Park. So, you know, the private property that's been, that's been designated as the state park, it's my understanding that with that will come a lease of the Army Corps of Engineers, so that with the state, with the state property, they'll have the core property, and the, you know, the state park will take care of all of that.
Which is basically shore.
Yeah, which is going to be, which is going to be a state park.
Shoreline, especially where they climb, is core property. So, it's going to be maintained by the state because of the law, correct?
Yeah.
That buffer area.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Okay, counsel, just a couple other things. The, I want to let you know that we received another invite from the Nicholas County Treatment Court. Circuit Judge Steve Callahan invites you to join him in a graduation celebration of the Nicholas County Family Court Treatment, or Treatment Court and Adult Drug Court on Thursday, September 7th, at the Nicholas County Courthouse at 11:00 a.m. Again, I salute the judge and his entire team, that does an excellent job with these programs, and getting people to, graduation is an incredible achievement, so therefore, if you could attend, you're invited. Counsel, the last thing I want to address before we move into a quick executive session is the sidewalk project. You know, there's, it's just such a challenging process. Economics has changed the whole dynamics of this process, and now the state is literally encouraging me, if the word wouldn't be begging me, to table the project and use the funds that I've applied for, for the second leg of this sidewalk, to help with the first leg of the sidewalk, because a half a million dollar project now has bumped up to $900,000. And the thing that bothers me about that is, what I, what the decision that needs to be made is, do we say no? We want to, we want to, you know, I want, I want to go to bid. I want a project bid this fall, which is what we've ultimately been working for. But if we do, the monies that have been appropriated right now will take us to the gravel area that goes up to that pond. So you know there, you know, there, I'm losing now.
Tully.
Yeah, Tully, but your daughter's.
Bogus.
Bogus. So Tully's owned a piece of property that still runs to the pond. Actually, if you look at the pond, they own, their boundaries are somewhere right there. Then you got the Bogus. What this was, what this project was supposed to do is take us all the way to the driveway of this side of Bogus. And then the next project was supposed to pick up on the other side of the driveway and take us to South Street. Okay?
North Street.
I mean, North Street, I'm sorry, North Street. I always get them backwards. North Street. But now what, now what the problem is, is this half a million dollar project is at $900,000 to get us to the Bogus driveway. So what the state's saying is, you don't have the money. And so we've either got to amend your second request, that was to pick up from the other side of the driveway to North Street, or we have to use these monies for this job. And what they're saying is, if you're going to go with your certain grant, the grant you have now and you want to bid, we've got to cut it back to that gravel driveway that runs up there next to the pond. So we'll put a sidewalk in from Grove Street to right past Ann Campbell's house.
For a million dollars?
For a half a million dollars.
For $900,000, the whole thing?
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things that's frustrating to me, and I've argued endlessly with the state, they're making us put in a sidewalk that, I mean, first of all, it's embarrassing if you would know what we're paying per foot. And they just keep adding stuff. Like, they took the entire time that the project's going to take place and added flaggers for traffic safety. So, we're arguing about that, you know. What about all the work that's done where you don't have to block, you know, you're not going to have it down to one lane? So we can certainly cut those hours. And then, you know, when, you know, and again, we knew all along, we had to pay prevailing rates, because these are federal funds. You know, it's unreal what the rate is, what you pay for flaggers, just flaggers, you know. So, so anyway, we've been back and forth and curbing and guttering, and we're moving a water line, and we're moving power poles, and actually, the water line, moving the water line, which is going to be right there by Ann Campbell's house, and moving the two power poles, which now we found out they miscouched, they've only got to move one, which is supposed to be the less expensive one. But anyway, we just, it just, you know, and I just tell them, "You all act like you don't want this project to happen." I mean, we got, we got approved the funding two years ago. And now they come back and say, "Do you want to do your half a million dollars worth," which will be, and it's going to be guttering and curbing, and of course, we've got to do all the drainage. I mean, we're putting in a.
State of the art side.
Yeah, state of the art, Bel Air, California whatever, you know, sidewalk. I mean, it just, it just blows my mind, and it wears me out, because, you know, they say, "Well, if we did this, this is the way we do it." And I said, "Well, let me take you, a lot of your state jobs, and, you know, you tell me that you..." It's just frustrating to me, because it almost seems like you deal with people that don't want this project to happen. And that's exactly the way I feel, and I've communicated that to you. So, it's not on the agenda tonight.
Does the state do it?
What?
Does the state do it? Or do they get a contract?
Well, I think that's a little bit why they're mad, because they wanted to do this project, and I told them no. And the reason I told them no, is I asked them, "Would the project stay the course?" And they said, "Yeah, unless anything emergency comes up." You know how much emergency stuff comes up at the state? So every time they got an emergency, you go on the back burner. And I said, "No, we're going to, we're going to handle this private. We're going to have a private engineer do it, and we're also going to bid it out and have it done by private." And so, I don't know, I'm totally, I don't know, so it's not on the agenda, I just found this out. And so what I would like is positive feedback on, or not, not positive, just feedback from you all on what you think should happen. We've got a half a million dollar grant that's been approved. If I tell them to move forward, because I want to go to bid before the year's out, so we can build sidewalk in '24, then I have to tell them, cut the sidewalk off there at the end of Ann Campbell's property.
Sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just from Grove Street to right there.
That section is not the.
The only thing that frustrates me, the only thing that frustrates me, is this is what I, this is what I think's going to happen. And I told them, "We have been messing with this for two years, getting through your processes." And just the whole, you know, they're telling me to change the dynamics of the grant and cut it off, it's going to take seven weeks. I said, "Why would it take seven weeks? Why seven more weeks?" But if we change, if we change and use the monies that I applied for for the second leg, you know, to help to this, we're still not going to construction now. They tell me, best case scenarios, we'll go to construction in 2025.
Really? On the first phase?
Yeah. Because, because of the, because of the approval of the money, you know, so they haven't, we don't even know if we're going to get the second round of money. But once you do, then you got to reconstruct everything, then get everything, all your ducks in line, all your permitting in line. There's all kinds of permitting, that originally, they told us that they were going to do the permitting, and we're talking about environmental permitting, Corps of Engineer permitting, there's all kinds, because you're dealing with, you know, water. And so originally, when we started this process, the state was going to do the permitting. Now they tell us you don't have the manpower to do it. So we've got to pay for that. And again, we've run the course on it. Actually, we'll probably pay for a lot of that out of house, because like, you know, some of these permits, to get the permits, are going to cost about $2,500, and we don't have him in the, you know, in the, in the, in the funding. So, I kind of need some guidance, some feedback on should, and the only reason I realize it's going to be a sidewalk to nowhere, but it would be sidewalk, and then, of course, we know we're going to stay the course and finish it. Otherwise, we say no, we start all over again, we take the current funding that we have, we combine it for the other funding to get the sidewalk in, and then I said, "What's going to happen?" I can just see right now what happens. You know, things will change, and we'll get down to the end of line, and they'll say, "You don't have enough money, now we got to get more funding." Or, you know, it's just always something else. But they're wanting an answer from us on, what are we going to do? Are we going to, are we going to end it there? Because if we do, our engineer has to re-engineer it and cut it off at somewhere right in there at the pond. Otherwise, we just basically have to say, "Okay, let's redo it." Like I told them, that the, the second, the second round of funding is not even for, so, you know, they're kind of telling me somehow that's going to be easy to do, to change that funding, to incorporate it back in this sidewalk. And then, and then the second round, we applied for $600,000, so it's only going to take about 800 and some thousand, right at 900,000, to take us to Bogus driveway. I said, "What about the balance of those funds?" And they said, "Well, maybe we can get them to allow you to carry them over to your next leg, which would be that from the other side of their driveway to North Street." We're going to have, you know, we're, you know, and we're going to do it, we're going to do it. But we're going to have, because of what the state's making us to do, because we're on their right of way, we're going to have, I mean, to get where we're going, we're going to have millions of dollars inside. And in fairness, in fairness to this whole process, a yard of concrete has gone up drastically. I'm tempted to say I want to get some sidewalk in, and don't want to delay it until 2025, till we see any sidewalk. I'm tempted to say, let's spend the half a million dollars we have now and put a sidewalk in.
I tend to agree with that. Let's do something.
I do too.
Let's do something.
That's what I said. We're going to tell the community forever.
Well, the decision, we can't make tonight.
Well, I mean, technically, I can make the decision, because the grant funds have been appropriated, the sidewalk's been appropriated, all we're doing is changing the boundary. And honestly, they want the decision. They wanted me to make the decision last week.
Well, if you've got the authority, do it.
But what I'm asking is, I want your all's input on what you think we should do.
Give what we can give, because who knows what two years will bring.
I think we have to start, if it's a project we want, I think we got to start. In this environment, I think we got to do something.
I agree. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, I haven't done anything yet, so...
And quite frankly, that's not what they want us to do.
You know, I mean, 100 yards, about 100 yards, it's safer for our walkers and runners. That's more than what we got now.
Just do it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that concludes the mayor's report. Next item on the agenda is counsel reports.
I just want to remind, I don't know who all got it, but Thursday, 4 to 8, Somersville Healthcare Center is open house up at the old Somersville. I got an email invite for that, they're open house from 4 to 8 up there this Thursday.
When is it?
4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. this Thursday.
Right next to the Friday.
Yes.
It was a big up the highway.
I think all the tickets are going.
Are they all sold?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
And that's one now.
What, what did you say? What was it?
Thursday, 4 to 8. Somersville Healthcare Center.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of a personnel issue. So quite frankly, I was rightly criticized, because when you do go into executive session, you can't just say what you're going in for, you have to say what the purpose is. And so the purpose is, for item A, their legal personnel are deliberative matters. And Ray, I do anticipate there will be something out of this and approval, so we'll be sure to let you know that.